What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session. Today we're looking at a hand history from the Bounty Hunter Sunday Special 10. Here we are. So first off, we raise, face a three bet, kind of base, early position, easy fold?
Yeah, I'm folding.
Yeah, your four bet bluff should start ace queen out, right? Like in GTO.
Deep stack. I don't know.
I think ace queen knows probably like is like the indifferent one you can call for better fold.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I don't like, I don't like to four bet ace queen.
I mean, fair enough. I was just saying that like it starts like theory wise, it starts above ace jack.
They're a little low on buffs.
Yeah.
You could do ace eight though, just a little larger, right?
Yeah. So check check, spike the eight, he bets pretty big. We're gonna have to fold. Hmm, pretty bad river.
Yeah, although like.
God.
Spades missed, is he really value betting a ten again? Straight or kind of?
He's a lot of jack eggs that were bluffing that get here too, though.
That is true. Jack X is a perfectly reasonable bluff, including jack X of spades, which like some kind of like trashy jack X, jack five of spades or something could.
Jack five, jack seven.
Ace is good here or bad?
I think some tens will still find this value, but.
Ace is good.
Be wrong though.
I think.
Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong.
I think you're right. I think it's like a better player that realizes they can still bet kind of bigish with a ten.
Let's see what I did. I don't remember. I think I like full here, but it's blind against blind. It's third pair.
Probably a theory call, but like.
It's yeah, it's one of your best hands you get here with. Cause like you're betting most of your tens on the flop.
Yeah. Probably have to call, right?
You're not calling with a lot of jack X on the turn. It's just one of your better hands, but yeah, I don't, I don't hate.
Easy game.
Um. Why do you see that?
Cause that's just what I do. I open flops and I see that the flop.
If this was four way, would you see that?
Yeah, that's my thing. No four way, no, because I'd be out of position, but in position, always.
Okay.
It's fine. You could go a smidge smaller.
Don't really understand what he's doing, but okay.
I mean, you know.
We get this, now it starts to matter. So this guy leave?
Uh, raise, I mean, every time, yeah.
Is this too large?
That's, it's huge. I don't know if it's too large. It is, it is big.
Look at, look at how much you leave behind.
Though, this board is.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
It's a little unbalanced.
You don't, you don't. But you don't really have like a raised fold with that sizing, so I think it's a little face up. I think you need to pick a sizing that like you can conceivably raise fold with.
I like eleven.
Yeah, I don't think this guy's calling. I made it too well.
And I think would be fine. You'd still have a fine SPR going into river or going into turn.
He calls, oh boy.
Tens too small for me.
Puts me in on the turn.
It could be.
Wait, you, you raised and then he's.
A guy behind.
Donks, you, he didn't donk's turn again?
Yes.
Please tell me he has like.
I mean, call.
Like ace, like ace ten, jack ten. What an idiot.
Nice end.
It's like this is a ten dollar tournament or something.
Yeah.
This here is bold.
Huh? Sorry? Was that a queen nine suited fold to three bet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dude.
What do you mean you?
Away.
What do you want to do?
You wanna play out of position?
He made it small. I'm calling here for sure.
This is such a fish.
Oh dog.
Dude, this is a clear call. Are you kidding me? Wait, can we check this? Am I this far off?
Bottom of our suited range, let it go.
Let it go.
Call queen ten?
Let it go.
Think like queen ten's mixing, honestly.
There's no way.
I looked at the ace eight hand and yeah, you're indifferent on river.
What's your fold to three bet, Nick?
Um, like fifty-five percent?
I think mine's forty-five.
Checks out.
Yeah, it is.
And Mr. Distavila liked it. He liked my forty-five fold to three bet.
Honestly, that. You call here, you're a torture. The machine is folding. See ya, Danny.
Yeah, I can.
Lose your five big ones.
I can make this profit. I can make this profitable against most opponents.
Out of position and.
Nick, I'm shocked you don't, you don't defend these against, like you have no respect for anyone. You're just gonna fold. It's kind of weird to me.
It starts at suited tens, right?
Yeah, you think you should learn from, you should go all offense and no defense.
Exactly, yeah. I'm over aggressive. I'm not a, I don't call.
And actually, at, at these stacked ups like fifty, sixty plus, you can.
I don't know, man.
Four bet like king ten suited a lot, right?
You don't get to win big three bet pots on the river if you're not playing them.
Alright, well, this one's alright.
Call seven two off, you might hit.
This dunk, this dunk is ridiculous.
For sure.
Can you raise for value?
I'm in the sandwich. I got a pretty strong hand. I'll take the two from him. So I think I just.
Yeah, it's pretty nice to keep him in with dominated seven X and six X and straight draws and stuff.
You said dunk, it's just to see that, right?
Sorry, I misheard, I misheard the action. Yeah, we, we called it position.
Yeah, so just calling the sandwich. I like it.
Oh, no, 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 no.
This is too big.
Too big.
Is it?
Yeah.
You want him to like float you with like ace, jack.
I have the board locked up like.
Make a mistake here. I want a weaker king to make a mistake here, no?
Yeah, but like he has other hands.
Against the sizing.
Ace, queen, queen, jack, like they have other hands than just a king here, and I think.
Yeah, but.
Pocket nines.
All that, no?
You have a really strong hand with a redraw to a stronger hand, like keep the fish on the line.
If I have like queen, jack, and I like, thought I could like blow you off with one small flop bet, then you called, and then, and then you bet like nine, eighty percent on turn. I'm just folding here because I'm like, people are just starting bluffing the sizing and up. Like against an unknown, I'm not sure I'm calling.
I mean, if you bet like, you know, seven or eight, it's gonna be, what, like a seventy-five percent jam on the river?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Uh.
At this tournament, these people are wild and.
Limb, I squeeze.
Oh my god.
A little bit.
Or whatever, I mean, who knows what his range is there anyway?
Full.
I like the, I like the three bets not too small.
Is it?
I said that I like that it's not too small.
Okay.
Yep. I think people just like go strictly three X, and it's just a little small and you can just get a little more value.
No, I don't like this.
Oh, no.
I'm like, I don't block kids.
But dude, you know, you teach us this stuff. What's your main bet size on a monotone flop?
Small.
Yeah. That's small.
I know.
He can call you with like, he can call you with like a ten with no spade. He can call you with like king ten, no spade, if you bet small.
Mm-hmm.
The hand is like dead.
Okay.
And because you're not getting a single big spade to fold anyways, like you can't really protect.
That's it, you like. A single business is not gonna fold.
Well, yes, like, but you're not protecting, like they just have a lot of equity against you anyway.
Value bet.
Yeah.
See?
It's in there. It's in there.
Ah, I'm not doing it right.
Twenty-five. I mean, it is, it is.
In my mind, I'm value betting.
No, I mean, I know you're value betting. I just think you could like, you can like target more weak parts of their range. Yeah, certainly your vibe, but you have the best hand most of the time, no doubt about that. And then it's just like, also, if you bet small, then you like, you get to like wait for the safe turn card, and you also get to value bet a safe turn card and like continue to put their single spade hands at the place. Sound awkward.
Check, check. Then this. I just bet.
Why?
Well. It's like I raise, he calls, I have like a hand that can check color, check raise, so I check. Club turns, I turn too much equity. Here, I'm like, if I make my hand, I want, I want to be able to play first stacks. I don't think he checks back many queens. I think he probably even bets most of his tens. So when the ten pairs he has less tens, and I'm pretty sure he bets every queen.
It is a good, good hand for your range, because you, you checked a lot of tens on flop, so that's true.
So in my.
Do you wanna get, do you wanna get called by worse hands?
Well, in my mind, when I bet here, I'm ahead of everything he has, so it's a value bet.
Sure, but like, my question is sizing.
Pocket, pocket fives, five, four suited, ace four suited. I mean, he has, he has hands here.
Yeah, would you make it four?
I mean, I, yeah, I like three.
I think the solver is gonna not even bet this hand a lot, because like best impaired hand. If you're gonna keep any clubs in reserve, I think it's probably top two, like you're gonna bet more like like I'd prefer to bet ace jack than ace king, right? I prefer to bet king nine than ace king.
I get called by his jack when I bet ace king here.
Not this, I mean, the sizing maybe not even.
Yeah, because he can't have either a single club in hand, or he has, he has jack clubs, that's irrelevant, pretty relevant at this point.
Like he has no tens, he has no queen, and then.
I think if you're value betting ace king, you gotta go kind of small to get called by worse.
Okay, so you guys.
That's where I'm at.
Or three, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe just hold this, this hand in reserve. It's, there's no doubt that you have a lot of equity, like that's not an under debate, but it might just be that it plays better as a check.
Yeah, here's the thing though, been doing a little bit more blind against blind stuff and I don't know, I think like small blind polarizes a lot more than I thought he does in general, you know? When we bet, when we.
Uh, I would agree about polarizing, but I think this is a polarization error, like you're polarizing is like good queens, tens, and then like you got a bunch of drunk, like you have like jack seven, you have like, you know.
What was the pre-flop? Did you raise or limp?
Raise.
Raise. I think it's probably a c-bet flop, just c-bet range flop.
Okay. I thought it was, uh.
I mean, checking a little bit's not crazy. I, I see the case for betting, but on turn, you see the solver saying strictly an error.
You know, when we raise from the small blind like this, any high card rainbow board, like if it was ace ten four would be great for me, queen ten four, then great for me.
Yeah, two broadways, it's good for, good for you.
For the original raise also, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we do check this, can we look at our turn strategy? Because I don't hate checking. I think checking is fine in a mix.
It's not too obvious.
No, so yeah, it's like if it's a value bet, you're just losing value. You're trying to isolate yourself against better hands at some point, you know?
Yeah, but it's so close, right? There is some.
Yeah, but like the, but the main sizing is still down there at twenty-one percent, like at twenty-one percent, I can definitely foresee me getting called by just like just non-believing like jack eight, you know?
Yeah. Like, how do you guys like that sizing on the turn?
It's, it's funny, because a lot of times you'd overbet here if you were deeper stacked, you're kind of shallow.
What is, does he have to do? He has just one answer. It's jam or fold, no?
I think it's too big.
I think you could just shove if you want to go the size, or you could go two E.
Yeah, I like going like fifteen to really just box him up with some stuff, and like twelve to fifteen.
And I don't hate shoving sometimes, because I think without a hard in hand, shoving is viable, like hands like this love to not see a river.
Okay, maybe twenty here would be better?
I'm going even smaller than that. Can you throw this in the machine?
I think you might have some shoves. Because like, yeah, SPR of like, what, it's like one point eight? See, it likes twenty-five, it likes fifty on flop, that's not surprising. No, all in.
Yeah, it's like twelve.
Yep, it's like two E.
And this, this just boxes him with some stuff and lets you have bluff still.
Yeah.
Yeah, because when you're setting up SPR of like one fourth on river, you don't really have bluffs.
We got a diamond. We got a ten.
I'm checking, I'm pure checking.
I know, I'm not gonna check. In position, I got a diamond.
What happens if you get raised?
And if you're super using and you know the, uh, card's a king.
Right.
If you can see.
What university check raised, Louis?
Is it fold?
Yeah, it's kind of a disaster to throw away this much equity.
I don't know, it's not that.
Against like, against like jack nine, you have a lot of equity, right? Yeah.
Feels like it's not that much, but okay, maybe. A bit.
Twelve overs.
We had two overs, we had backdoor straight draw, backdoor flush draw.
Hey, here we are, what the guys did.
I mean, bet for sure, um. Kind of like small to medium mesh. I don't think you'd go that big when you, when you turn, because you want to bluff a ton here. Like you have so many like your ace size want to bluff, like honestly, your whole range probably wants to bet a lot. Because they're just like, they're just tied up around like nine X and five X. And I think you want to apply a lot of pressure to that.
I don't know turn three way strategy well, um.
I mean, yeah, I don't know the three way strategy for sure.
I'm probably polarizing here like all, because you, we have like a king or nothing, so I like this sizing.
Alright, it's interesting. I've seen these both ways in these like scare card comes on the turn kind of spots where like sometimes it's like arrangement smallish and sometimes it's more polarized, and I've honestly never figured out kind of which way to.
Well, it's interesting too, because we, we were in the high jack on a nine high board, so we don't really connect with it and we bet, so we're not gonna be betting a ton, I think. I think we're checking back like forty, fifty percent of the time. So I don't think we have a ton of ace X and king X. Could be wrong, but.
What do you guys say here?
I've snapped.
Fold.
I've never folded faster.
Yeah.
So I think it's a call, right?
No.
Uh, Nick, you are right on the king high board. I looked at the heads up solve, and it's all bigish against big blind on that action. It'll be different in a three-way action, but at least in a heads up. Uh, it only really uses eighty-three and one twenty-five on turn.
The thing these players do great in multi-way PKO scenarios, you should always call good.
Oh, it's the PKO. I don't think we do that. Yeah, I didn't know that.
Bounty hunter.
Yeah.
So.
Uh.
So what's, what's the worst pair that you're calling here, Louis?
Five. Dear god, no.
Good question, Peter. I might fold losers. That's it.
I mean, I don't know, it's a different way. Under the gun raises first in. There's two more people in the pot, big blind, three bets, which is notoriously under some bluff spot, under the gun is happy to put all his chips in. Uh, like, what, give him a range, assign him a range.
Hmm, I don't need to.
You, you certainly need to.
The small.
Big blind.
PKO is gonna do great.
No, I mean, you have to assign him a range.
Big blind like, nine plus, and then like ace queen plus?
I don't think so. So PKO early stages, blah, blah, blah.
How many starting stacks is this?
Ah, good question.
I don't know, man.
You're up against two, what, capped range?
One starting stack, yep.
Just, just one point two, one point three. Yeah, I'm folding.
I ain't folding.
Yeah. This is so deep, dude, not good.
What do you think, what do you think the big blind's range is?
Listen.
I think like nines plus is pretty accurate. That's what you get, Nick.
Yeah.
I mean, without a read, like who knows, but it's a ten dollar tournament, but like, nines plus?
What do you think he, like, like?
Seven's plus?
Jack then suited.
He calls. He calls, he calls every time.
I don't know, man, I disagree. I think small bears here are always gonna do amazing.
I think you're versus two people where you're flipping or crushed against both ranges, so like they never have worse, right?
Showdown. This is just like the best you could have hoped for. One guy has sevens and the other guy has ace king, like what if they had nines and ace king? What if they had sevens and jacks, like?
Just spike it, then.
Just spike it.
I hadn't considered that strategy.
Just spike it. No, seriously, this is a mandatory call.
I'm not sure. We should, uh, say this and use a tool later.
Yeah, I really think it depends on how you arrange these guys, and also it's like, it's not just what the theory range is, it's it's, uh, and the fact that they show up with sevens and ace king is like not that encouraging to me. If someone showed up here with ace jack, I would feel better, you know? Like, if someone showed up here with fives, I would feel better.
My book, this is a mandatory basic PKO call.
What about sevens?
Same.
What about sixes?
Same.
Yeah, I think you're calling, like, the ranges matter, right? If this was like a guy opened cutoff and he planted button, then small blind jammed and cut off re-isowed, it'd be different, because they're.
Pairs have here?
Their value ranges are wider, not, not when they're not jamming worse pairs.
But, but equity, yeah, I mean, equity, you can't just like say equity, equity is against a range, and like if the range is weak, then you have a lot of equity. If the range is strong, then you have a lot less equity.
Right, so like, this time, these two guys have a hand, right? It's one of these times, but what I see in the field, sometimes this guy has ten, ten, seven off.
I just want a note on that player, like I want to, I want other people to take the fall before I'm gonna.
So Louis, hypothetical, let's say the worst hand the big blind jams is pocket sevens, um, and then like I don't know, ace queen off plus, ace jack suited plus, do you think this is a call?
One of them is in it, I start to change my mind a lot about this. Like a big.
I really think that's nitty. I think that's just like standard strategies, like a GTO opponent.
I think people shove all kinds of stuff.
Why do you think that?
Because it's call, call, call. So my range is super cap, his range is super cap. So he's only really fighting with him and he covers him, and if he has a big booty or anything, and then these guys you know, it's a Sunday, man, his wife might be yelling at him, who knows what he's made, who could be up to. So this here, I don't really respect this. This here is a worry.
It's a lot of assumptions. But okay.
But I, I think this is a very, very basic spot. Like, don't think you should fold any pair.
It's an HRC question, at the end of the day, right?
Hundred percent.
To find out what the, uh, what the theory range is, and then we can talk about it for the next play.
Yeah, but in my mind, it's not even close. You run everywhere.
I think it's, I think it's close, and then like sixes is a pure fold for sure. Sevens probably pure fold.
Okay, so we save it? Yeah. Will we both save? In the.
And get, I mean, give Louis the benefit of the doubt and give the big blind the widest range you think is reasonable, and still with the, under the gun call, I think HRC is going to not be kind to Louis.
Well, if one guy's a whack ball and then the other guy, you know, has a reasonable range, you're, you're still getting a decent price to hunt at that range. Because you cover both.
Louis, does the low buy-in price affect that decision as well? It's easy to rebuy for tenner.
Nope.
Absolutely not. Okay. Think you should play like that at every. Every debt, every price. The, the, the bigger the prices, the more you should take this one. Okay, the, the smaller your edge is gonna be.
The more often you can fun and get lucky.
So I put it in the PKO.
Where's Ken when you need him?
That's a rhetorical question.
This one's interesting.
Yeah, I, I, I'm raising a lot larger here.
Yeah, I don't, like, I know that you can make some adjustments. I think they're interesting and weird spots, um. So he folded, is that a thing? Big blind folded?
Uh, he was, uh, out.
He's all in pre-flop.
Yeah, he's out.
Should, that's why I like, why do you min raise, Louis?
Because no one knew, including me. That, this.
Oh, okay, that's fair. It's a really good reason, okay.
Yeah, if you didn't notice, yeah.
I did the same thing sometimes, so. No one knew, including me.
So.
Oh.
It's a theory call, but it's kind of, yeah, like, yeah, you probably call.
Easy call.
I mean, it's just like, some people are so nutted.
Yes, go ahead.
Since, since you know the big blind, who, who's your most likely opponent is, is in any way. Why do you need to bet larger? Why bet?
To try it up. Well, the big blind's all in and you want to bounty hunt him, so you want to isolate to get a heads up, so raise to like six or seven, so you don't get ten callers behind. Yeah.
Right, because his bounty, I forgot bounty, okay, thank you.
I probably just went two point one, hoping the one would notice this. Or I didn't notice myself. But then I saw it though. Okay, so call, blah, blah, blah. Where's the club when you need one? Get this board, we check, you see bets, we're out. So this year, what do you guys do? Three bet?
Three bet.
Um, three bet or jam, they're both fine.
Yeah.
A little spicy spicy.
It's fine. I mean bounty, right? We, we're okay with taking big plots.
The check check, what do you guys do here? I'm gonna pop it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it seems fine.
Uh, probably a little bit too big three ways.
I might go, I might go sixty percent, but like, especially with the ace of hearts, you're a little bit more protected.
I agree. I'm going like seventy to eighty, but I don't hate pot.
What are the violations that, that, um, in a three-way pot, we usually bet small? What, why does this change our mind?
I'm trying to exploit these guys. If one of them wants to call me, we're gonna make it.
It's, it's that the texture is a very typical, very typical, like, big, big bet, it's a double gutter. So like there's, like every hand you can imagine has a gut shot, but no hand you can imagine has a straight.
I, I feel like the rule, it's a multi-way bet small, has gone out the window for me completely. It's not really a rule. There's a lot of boards where you have big bets still.
Okay.
I'm going way smaller than this.
I agree. If you want to get value here, I think you need to go, I mean, you see B ten in the solve.
You can't, you can't show weakness here.
What are you talking about?
Farther than a third. If you show the hair of weakness is gonna jam and god knows what into you, and then.
The SPR is one. What do you do if you have ace, king, ace, queen?
Same. But.
No, I think it's a mistake. Throw it, throw in the solve. Like. You're gonna just bet like twenty percent to ten percent.
If you show weakness, these people, man, they're gonna just run me, they're just gonna, you know?
Maybe you want them to, then.
Well, yeah, but then it's kind of like, you, if you've actually induced bluff from better, then you can call profitably. If, if your hand doesn't have value and he just has an ace, then you have a fold, like.
Uh, yeah, doesn't have it.
But yeah, I think what Kings is gonna be B ten or B twenty here. You're allowed to go small, especially with a low SPR.
Yeah, I'm like range betting ten percent or fifteen percent, just tiny. Solvers probably just has a jamming range and I have a three bet range, because there's what, two callers, three callers?
Yeah, he doesn't have a calling range in the three bet.
Doesn't he?
No.
He must.
So.
That's, that doesn't make, no, something's. Oh, yeah, yeah, he's a client.
No.
I think you're looking at somewhere else. I think you're looking at big blind.
The big blind, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so call, and then the board is ace a diamond?
And you know, hand clubs, if anything, allows you to be a, a little bit, a little bit slower. It's a small effect, but.
Must be a c-bet, c-bet here.
Yeah, I mean, you can check. This hand can be ten, this can, hand can be twenty, this hand doesn't ever go bigger than that.
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, you nitpickers, ten percent. But if you ten percent here, hmm.
I mean, you say nitpicking, but you bet three times the amount of ten percent.
Yeah. And like twenty-five, twenty-five is the high side in the solve, the mix is between check and B ten and B twenty-five, and that kind of gives you the idea of where the range is.
And the club, the club pushes it to the, the B twenty-five a little bit more. And the club, the club pushes it to the, the B twenty-five a little bit more.
Uh, the opposite, club pushes you down.
No, look, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the picture.
Oh, oh, you're right.
I'm looking at the little picture.
What you guys like to do?
Okay, I'm wrong.
I'm only looking at the part of the.
What the fuck, um.
Oh, Jesus.
I don't know, man.
The answer is, the answer is easy, under four chips, you bet one point two, oh my gosh.
He's gonna be disappointed by the result. Then, yeah. Um, there again, I don't know, on queen, queen seven, I think my default, C bet and a three-bet pot is twenty-five.
What do you do here?
Your, your cap is part of the problem.
I'm calling this deep.
Yeah, you can call.
Yeah.
It's like, if you were the open raiser, I would like four betting kind of a lot. Back raising at the caller is a little transparent and bullshity.
What do you do here?
Call.
Does he call?
Yeah, mainly call. You're allowed to spice it up a little bit, but.
I don't think we are this deep.
This is atrocious.
Either. You guys are nits.
This is fucking terrible.
You have ace, king in the box, and now you've just opened the box.
It's, it's like a bunch of nits around here, it's funny.
No, calling is not nitty here. Calling is aggressive. Calling is the most aggressive thing you can do.
It's, it's better in a, it's better in a three-bet pot, because he's gonna have less fives, except for all of his, you know, naturally easy to find ace five bluffs, but yeah.
See, it's raising sometimes.
It's raising smaller and it is not the majority play, like, yeah. Trying to. One pair is not a good strategy.
Louis, do people three-bet bluff enough?
No.
So that should push, push this way down in frequency to a raise. It's like, when you get called, you're just crushed.
And the solver's trying to get value from like, some proportion of like queen, jack, jack ten hands that like they just don't have.
Well, usually I wouldn't do that against a net, so B seven.
You have thirteen hands on him.
He's twenty, but he's twenty-three fifteen.
His first three bet, maybe I have a mark. Maybe it's a mark thing, you know?
Yeah.
You have a mark against him that says misplay hands against this guy?
I hope he just clicks it against you.
It's so sick.
Why are you guys always rooting against me?
Because this is bad.
Uh, no, I mean, it's in there, yeah, you're, you're allowed to do it, but you should ask yourself if you have an exploitative reason to not pick that sliver, and I think you do.
So you guys don't raise it?
Nope.
I'm the only one raising for value.
Yes.
Yeah.
What, what value hands, or what hands do you get value from?
Ace five, pocket aces. Your pocket jacks, ace jack. Alright.
Well, you've bought Kings at least.
Oh, yeah, this is the worst case scenario, fish off the line.
Yeah, like let him bluff it off with ace queen.
Or let him hit the king with ace.
Seven suited, yeah.
You're hitting the king when he has ace, king, king, queen would be pretty nice.
Bold.
Please fold, please fold, okay.
Ah.
Not there.
Little, little action.
What do you guys do here?
I think you could, you can, you can definitely call a little bit, it's a small bet, you could raise, I don't hate it.
Okay.
Is there at least a solve holding here?
Hmm, no, folding's not an option to a third pot bet, you just have like five very live outs.
Who?
Okay.
You have backdoor straight, you have backdoor flush, like you're just not allowed to fold here. If you have a reading, the guy's super tight, like if you just literally always have like pocket sevens or better, then maybe, but like. No.
Okay.
This is pure check raise.
Yeah, and like, you know, like, yeah, you know, I think people, people have king ten suited there. You check to them, they bet.
Kind of connectivity does he have with this board?
Uh, like, hands like, he can have pocket sixes and be tight and be like, I guess he has maybe, he can have queen ten, he can have stuff like that, yep.
My mind, he just C bets and then, you know, he's gonna hit on the turn or on the river, unless we.
And you don't want to raise too many of your low pairs, but the ace deuce is the one to go with.
Okay.
Flopping sets is good, OP, oh my god, these people just love to jam. And make a hand and they just throw all their chips at the pot.
He should have lost all his money in a different order.
I mean, yeah, but like it.
Yeah.
When they check, that tells you something about the range, doesn't it? Like if they're dunking two pair plus, then like, what do they have when they check calling?
Yeah.
Okay, so I bet the one, he calls, check, check on the turn, and then he bets small on the river.
Okay. Oh my god, what is this? I mean, I think you have the, no, I mean, of course, you have the best hand, but just like, what is he doing? What, like, what two cards could you ever have this line?
We'll never know.
This, uh, this term is pretty fishy, man.
Yeah.
Yeah, you might just check call, I can see the case for checking raising.
Yeah, I agree, I think you call or raise, I think they're both fine, definitely raise now.
Yeah, and you don't expect that he has your beat, you still want to get value.
Um, something like seventy-five percent here?
I think that seems good.
I checked the river.
Ooh, ooh, too tight.
Why, 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 why?
Cause I go like check raise, he calls, and I check, cause it's like a shutdown, and usually when you.
No.
It's not, he just doesn't have, his range is not primarily set here, his range is a lot of like single high diamonds, queen plus a diamond. Queen four, yeah, pocket, yeah. He's just so many hands that can.
But I just thought, he was a, I, I had to let him bluff her.
Yeah, but these, they don't bluff enough, especially on the river in position, that you gotta just. I had, I had, I had a similar spot in the live tournament the other day and I. Where I think it. Seventy-five, sixty, seventy.
Yeah, you bet like seventy-five percent and a queen calls you, if he has like four or three with a diamond, he might call you, and all those answers are gonna check.
Alright. I think he's pretty faced up, his range looks like. What it is.
Can we throw this off? I want to see the sizing on the river, like.
Really, the whole line, I'm curious about that, like, flop strategy, turn strategy, we're all kind of, um, had options, like, I'd be curious to see how the solver handles them. I'm glad you got the turn raise in, that, that got some chips in the pot.
So check call on the flop, turn, just check.
So yeah, it doesn't raise. Okay, so it raises bigger, yeah.
I never check.
And that sets you up, sets you up for like a river jam, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you raise like hundred percent on the turn, then you can just jam river.
Mostly eighty-six, but some small to protect your small range, makes sense.
I went with just a call here. Check that big, oh.
Yeah, there's not a lot to do there.
So should I see Beth here? Wasn't sure.
Yeah, I think you can, I think you can see bet there, I think. The four and the three, they're actually light on them, because they're missing a bunch of offsuit combos, so I think they just have a lot of air.
Do you see that big against a three, uh, eight, three, four?
Not really, rainbow, I don't know.
I thought you do.
They'll have a small, they'll have a small and a big sizing.
Yeah, I might be doing this one wrong, but like, I would be more likely to go big on like eight, six, three, where I think they have a lot more of the like mid. Part of the deck gut shots.
You get a better ace to fold?
No, but you just get tons of two life cards to fold, and that's why I want to go small, because like, the protection you can get for very cheap.
I want to go small, because we can still call it check raise with this hand.
The problem is a worse ace might check raise you here though. Right, you don't get a better ace to fold, and you might get check raised by a worse ace.
Yeah, it's just been a thing in my game where I need to find more of these like, kind of marginal crappy C bets. Um, this one's in the mix. I have it up. Myself is doing this like, betting like twenty-five, thirty percent of the time, no more, forty percent of the time.
So the board. Oh, the board bets, the board does bet big.
So we check it, big a lot, we base the strategy around eight X. And then it's five X, six, six, that can make the straight here. Three, four, five, blah, 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 with one over card and a backdoor flush. Nine X a little bit. Seven and six, yeah, seven and six, so five or six are, okay, so it makes sense.
And then look at that A seven O.
Yeah, that, our primary bet size for the board is very big.
Yeah.
You know, eight.
Yeah.
Three. It's a highly, this board, but this hand fits into the small.
Yeah, all over the place though, because you have thirteen percent bet twenty, eleven percent bet thirty-three, but then you're right, the biggest is B eighty-three.
Yeah, you're betting small, as much as you're betting eighty percent.
Yeah, but add in the, add in the one twenty-five, and you're not.
So it's, yeah, it's like thirty percent bet big, twenty-five percent bet small, forty percent check.
Yeah.
Oh, 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 double gutter, double gutter. I don't know if we're supposed to fold this.
You can't fold.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a fold.
Okay. I'll be like, I'm not sure about his turn sizing.
Look at his size, like.
I don't really think that's a thing, but when they give me good odds, I call.
I think this is fun, like if he has like a three or a four, he can bet the sizing.
We, we check through. Oh yeah, it's in there, he has big, he has small, he has love everything. Yep, and Nick, you're exactly right, he can stab with like a three or a four. Yeah, we just have a lot of outs against a three or a four.
Did I just not see better?
Yeah, I want to just, I just want to throw out a twenty-five percent here. Save problems like this. Cause yeah, you could have like gotten bluffed off by like ten-nine, queen nine.
Uh, jam.
Yep.
Wait, did I not have a, a million big blends and now I don't have anything?
Wait.
Yeah, check folded pocket fives.
I am, I'm not opening this. Why do you open this?
Oh yeah, yeah, queen ten, I was not open, that's true. Sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't even thinking about that.
Okay.
It's uh, it's ace ten O, king jacko, and I think queen jacko can fold here.
Should I just see but?
Yes.
Yes. Range bets small.
Tiny quarter pot.
And why do you call here?
Cause I'm jam, I'm suited, I jam, should I call?
No.
I think like you just want to jam all of it in a PKO.
Yeah, twelve big binds, you just get called by worse a lot. You just get it good. I mean, you fought the world, I also, I'm not sure that you raised that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have too much hand.
That's a mistake.
Yeah.
This was just foul here.
Yeah.
You're strong, you're never folding no matter what.
I'd raise, I'd raise some more like one pair hands when you're that shallow. If you're a little deeper, then sure, raise more two pairs, but you just don't need to. You're not folding.
Uh, too big, I think. I think this hand you're gonna go mostly small with. You have like sevens, eights, or nines.
This is queens, man, it's not that strong.
What, what'd you say?
Not that strong here.
Or it's, you, I think you want to say is it's kind of vulnerable, right? Like, there are two overcards that can.
No, not only that, a three.
There are straight cards.
The straight card, if the board pairs, there's a lot of things that could go wrong here.
Yeah, yeah.
But you can like bet small, you can check raise, you can just stick it in his face. Look at this, never doing it.
Wait, that's, that's pre-flop, it's limping, that's fine, we can skip the flop. That's small.
Too good. You can see like the vulnerable over pairs, sevens, eights, nines, they're gonna take this giant size, but queens are just too good.
And you want to induce more bluff raises, because then you just get it in, you're happy.
Yeah, hundred percent.
That is the thing though, where like you could think about some exploitative strategies, if they're under check raising, it does kind of encourage you to bet a little bit bigger with that value and. You don't have to like perfectly implement that, but it's worth thinking about, yeah, pocket nines. Pocket tens a little bit more. Jack's a little more. Alright, let's go. We're gonna win this tournament, huh?
Maybe I picked the wrong answer.
Yeah.
It's possible. Nope.
Fuck.
We're back.
They have a straight, they have two pair, you don't care.
The church.
People.
The church is closed, go back home.
Alright, that's how you win poker tournaments, kids.
So yeah.
Uh, oh, that ace is sizing.
I just called pre.
That's fine, it's the, the turn sizing.
Check, check on the flop, what am I gonna do with my aces now?
Hot.
Check again, no.
No, it's not, it's not the, the betting, it's the, it's the potting. It's again, these lines where like you bet full pot and you leave yourself four point eight big blinds behind, what does this look like to people? Like, does this look like you're getting stabby with like nine, seven?
No.
Well, you know, but so then like, what's their incentive to call you with like, whatever?
Um, do they ever fold a spade?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Like if I'm, if I'm going this big, I just want to jam. I just want to jam if I'm being this big, like I would want to bet a, like a mediumish size that's like reasonable or just jam myself. It's fine, he had a hand. I just think those lines are a little face up, and I think like better opponents are gonna sniff you out. Cause you're just not doing that with bluffs, and like, you're, you know, stuff should be balanced somehow.
Little tree bed, ace five off?
Seems good, I think the sizing's just about right, right? Kind of shallow, seven, big ones, it's good. Do you ever just jam ace, king over there, or is the three bet better?
I don't think so.
Uh, the range I'm looking at says mainly just jam.
Really?
Yeah.
Uh, we're getting deep in the game here.
I mean, I almost, all the more so. All the more so, honestly.
I'm surprised I didn't call actually, I think calling the big with option.
Yeah, I think you can mix. Uh, yeah, I looked up a fifty percent of field ICM where your twenty-five and hijack has more and you three bet a lot, but you can still jam. Still in there. Ace kingo, just like, you know, we all know, it doesn't love to play flops. Oh, I think we could just. Get it in on turn, right? We don't really expect to do a lot of flushes.
But I think when we bet one here and it just calls. Then he leads turn, it's just like we induced him a little bit. So we're in position. We still have one street, so maybe he's fuel a little bit more on the river.
I, I think, I wanted like. Center my poker strategy around like I need to do my own value betting, because I do not trust these jokers to value bet for me.
Well, now and you're in position.
But you're in position.
If you miss, you'll have the river to, to fire.
Yeah, but the problem is you're going to the river with an S P R over one. Um.
He's just messing around here, Tim, he might mess around again on the river.
Yeah, I don't hate it, but he can be messing around with a single diamond, it's kind of nice just like force them to put their chips in now when they don't know where they're at.
Yeah. Who checks? I bet eight?
He was, he was setting the price for his draw probably with a diamond.
That's, or, yeah, that's what.
I mean, he's, when he, he's not folding a king there.
Yeah.
And he didn't have a nine, so. I, I've seen that a few times too, guys will just. Flop a draw and try to bet small to manage the pot.
What was the board nine, nine?
Nine, nine, four, king?
Yeah.
Yeah, completed diamonds on turn.
Let's trade the honesty.
He, he just wanted to see if we're, we're pooping the turn.
I mean, I think the dog is kind of goofy to begin with. Yeah, solver has no dogs. I just like, when they tell me that this is the all the money I want to go in on the street, I tell them hell no. Like. They're like, I don't want to put in more money than that, yeah, solver's raising all nines on the turn. No, I'm sorry. Against a donk. It's still raising a lot. Yeah, both are fine.
This is always ace queen.
Call.
Ooh.
No. We called against two thirty big blind jams earlier with pocket eights, and now we can't find a jam. We can't find a call for ten big blinds.
Yeah, but we're a lot deeper in the game now.
But he can still have ace, king, ace, queen, ace, jack, right?
Yeah, but now. Like it must have been a small bounty and we're a lot deeper in the game.
So you flatted a guy who covered you. To fold to a guy who you double cover. Right, like the problem is if the mistake is calling the fives, if you're not calling off when this guy jams.
Probably right, should fold here, right?
Yeah, you're too, you're too shallow to set by.
Bet smaller here?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's lots of room for him to get in trouble.
This is a fold?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. So what do you guys say about this one? This is final two or final three tables?
Damn, every chip, damn, all that, damn, 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 never jam faster.
Against button and cut off, you're probably squeezing sevens plus here.
Oh, yeah, you're, yeah.
The church was close.
Oh, oh.
He was flat.
I'm like a prehistoric dinosaur.
I think I'm supposed to barrel here and I didn't.
That jack's good for your range.
Because we're getting too deep in this game and this guy, when he calls there. And then I'm supposed to barrel, I'm pretty sure, but I don't think he folds ever a nice. I don't think he defends ICM correctly, I don't think he pushes correctly. But I'm just like, ah.
I think you get a cheap, you get a cheap bluff through, although maybe this isn't the best hand to do with it, because like. Nine is kind of good and it has some redraw against hands like that, exactly.
Uh huh.
But like, I think this is exactly the kind of hand that you can get. Hold on turn and you don't have to go so big, like that turn two big blinds, jam river. Pretty miserable spot for him. I don't think he's just stashing off.
Yeah.
And I mean, even if you bet like.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Pretty puck committing for him.
Uh, I mean, I kind of want to take this one to the streets, is that crazy?
Well. I want to keep bounty access, right? So yes, there's a bounty here, but. If I make a seven, the other two. And then here. Uh, we're deep in the game, as I said. Final two table. So if I shove here and his eyes ace, it's G G, good night. Right? Hello?
Well, um.
Hello?
I think if we're gonna have some non-all in sizing with aces and kings here. We're gonna have some non-all in sizing with some of the smaller pairs that we're getting.
Fair.
You guys heard me when, when I said we're very deep in the tournament now.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but like you. I, I still. I. At some level, I don't, I don't really care, it's a. Fuck, the seven's a good hand.
If you jam here, this guy has aces, it's G G, right?
Yeah, obviously. That's, that's life.
Well, how strong does an eight big blind raise look here?
We, I don't think it's a good squeeze with seven too.
That's the thing, we just get called by overcards a lot there, like. Like king, queen, I think it's just like, has an easy time calling, so. Small booty call, big booty jam. Dude.
Yeah.
To be results oriented, can we consider jamming again, knowing that they have hands like this? Like make him put his chips in. Or just take his chips down.
With queen five suited when we squeezed the eight from the bay.
Uh, it's queen five offsuit, excuse me.
Yeah, and queen five suited, how happy is he with queen five suited?
Dude.
Dude.
Did we, did we fold the sevens?
Yeah, on the flop, unimproved.
Oh, okay. So we called pre-flop, I didn't see that.
Yeah, we, we called pre-flop, we were closing action, which was nice.
Right, okay.
I don't mind calling those sevens either, but.
Yeah, I think calling is okay, I, I see it as a pretty good jam spot, because I expect that they're gonna have a lot of folds and sure enough, he had a pretty good fold, like an easy fold there, so.
What do you guys do here? You're gonna say flicker?
Bucks.
Full. Even though we saw that this guy is up to shenanigans.
Dude, you're, you probably can. All prices so good. It sucks. If I know he's gonna play like that, that encourages me to check back this hand. That's, that's one answer. Because then on a turn, you hit a jack, he doesn't believe you, he calls you down with his. Eight X.
Fold. Keep folding.
I don't know, six big blinds. I think this is a theory call, right?
Those copy, you say fold?
It's a theory call, you call, uh, you called out a jack four O and ten three suited.
So, easy call?
It's worth a chippy V, non PKO, it's worth one point one big blinds. Not optional.
Okay.
Not encouraging when they like always have ace X repairs. Even when you're five big blinds or six big blind effective, but it worked out. Yeah, he can flip ace five off, up, face up and you still have like basically the appropriate call.
What do you do here on this?
Lumper fold.
Limb, oh my goodness.
Yeah, limping seems okay, I don't really use limping strategy, but it's okay.
Okay. Anyone else, just limp? Or fold?
Lumper fold. Ten PB from U T G one. Chippy V jams, but you need to be tighter than chippy V. Because most people cover you and they will call you off by. Eh, I don't hate it. Whatever. Yoi. Yeah, you're supposed to defend, oh my god, well, thank god, okay. I think you're not supposed to raise, yeah, good, good job. Cool. Very nice. You might have let him off the hook if you jammed.
What are you guys saying?
I mean, even under heavy ICM, you can still just jam this.
But not that.
Depends on exact spot.
Think it's a fold, right?
Yeah. Oh, Jesus.
Just waiting for aces.
This is final two tables then here?
Ooh, at seven big blinds, I think I would prefer to just jam. I, I don't want to have a raised holding range anymore. Yeah, we're done. Seems like a mandatory call.
Yeah, easy call.
Yeah, I know the short sacks, like you just, you have nuts. If he's jamming queen three O.
Man, on the turn, I was like, is he serious? Is he gonna get me with green tree?
That's probably out of line. Probably not even. Not even, uh. equilibrium.
Okay.
How did we go sixty-two big blinds?
Promised lands.
Roll back.
Roll back, of course, okay.
So final table. Here it starts. What do you want to do?
Uh. I want to rebound and fold to further action. This is like a kind of hand that makes like a, not against U T G, but you makes like a good three bet fold in other positions anyway. So. Make it seven, make it eight.
Okay, maybe I should do that. I went with like a click.
I think it's a little small. Like I think it's a little easier for someone to like give you further action there.
Hmm.
Yeah, but it's fine.
Now what?
So it doesn't break out the side pot, how much is inside pot? Like what, it's like three point five, four big ones on the side pot?
Hmm.
Because yeah, you went one point seven over, so it was one point seven plus, one point four plus one point four.
Yeah. Do you check? I would just bet big, huh?
No, you want to bet big, definitely. You have like, you're strong but vulnerable.
The thing is also there's ICM and I'm betting into chip leader. Right? So I want to bet big, but it's like, that's the thing, as big as I can bet.
This is, yeah, this is your best. Hand like you can, you can show up your best and most vulnerable hand. You can show up with a half pot bet here.
Against chip leader at ICM?
Yeah. Yep. Because it's your best hand and he just without flopping two pair or a set, he doesn't have better.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, like the chip leader thing's real, but. Still like, just an extremely strong hand.
What do you guys do here?
And it's not gonna get stronger on turns in rivers, that's the other thing, it's like I don't really want him floating any light and then like making my life miserable on future streets, like we can check back turn.
Yeah, like you can bet smaller with like queens and jacks there and kings, but ace ten is the most vulnerable one.
I could get out of here with deuces, I have no.
Yeah, because the, the five point six eight in the big, in the big blind.
Yeah, but like if he jams, he reopens action. We're not really play.
Right.
Playing against low jack, this, this hand sucks.
Right, that's why, that's why I was saying fold it, because.
Yeah.
If the big line jams. It re, it's big enough to reopen. And you're gonna have to lose.
Yeah, I don't need to put chips.
There's also the eleven behind that would be uncomfortable.
There's, there's two rejam stacks behind you, it's just a fold.
Yeah, it's over.
Even if you think you're getting the right odds to set mine, when you get squeezed, it's just.
But back at those guys, it never loses.
Nah.
You're getting the right out to set mine against this guy, but not against. Who? Good things happen. Now we lose a different amount in a different way.
Yeah. Right, we did.
So yeah, final table ICM means that like. Depending on the arrangement, like in these mid position spots, we're gonna. Hold most of our deuces to five, they start to pick up more calls as you go up, sixes more, sevens more. We just don't need to play all these hands.
When you flop a set, because it's final table, it's gonna be harder to get all the money in.
Exactly, people just play very cagey, they make big folds.
Deuces start to lose some of the implied odds value. But at this table, with some of the things that, uh, went on, maybe not so much.
Um, I think this is a call.
For sure.
Yeah, it's fine.
No, just a fold.
Your second pair has been devoted to third pair, but it's rainbow and he polarizes.
He has rainbow and we have a gutter, it's like, it's a shitty spot.
Yeah.
I will give him credit, people are really nitty on final tables.
It, it's a double, it's a double blocker flush, like, I mean, I don't know that it's gonna want to fold there.
Yeah, I'm okay with the exploit fold, though. Because like people are just like barreling kings. He's clean.
He's the chip leader, he's also gonna be barreling a lot of air, more than anyone else, right?
Yeah, you're, I mean, you definitely think he should be, whether he actually is, it's like an open question. Uh, jam pocket tens, right? I mean, what else do I do?
I don't think you can jam.
I think you can.
If you jam, the big bang wakes up with kings, what do you do? Lose all the chips?
I don't have, I don't have choices anywhere, I need to jam, I see a flop turn the river, G G. I don't give a fuck, man.
So if you make it seven here and the big blind jams, you're playing to fold them, right?
That's insane. We are not raised folding pocket tens, we are not raised folding pocket tens.
Well then, why aren't you jamming?
I, wait. I want to jam, right?
I don't think jamming is good here.
I'm looking at the spot.
Everyone folds?
But you're not, but like this is not strong enough to be excited to raise three bet and then call off, like. That range is like kings, right? Kings are excited to like three bet and call off. This hand is.
I open, he opens at three bets, like this guy's not gonna bluff me here, no? If he jams, I just fold.
It's not about bluffing you per se, it's just like having easy decisions.
It's a super easy decision, fight three bet and he jams.
You fold?
Yeah.
He has ace king O.
Yeah.
So, okay, so a couple, couple comments, I'm looking at, um, you want to see a SM?
Like it's not gonna be nines, right? It's gonna be tens maybe plus and then could stuff that I flip against. So not a great situation, and then if he jams. Like I take a flip against the, I'm, I'm at the bottom of the, the range here.
I think you're just over adjusting the final table, like it's, it's still a gambling game, you gotta pick good spots and like tens is just, just good enough, like.
I don't gamble. I gamble.
Oh, you want? You want to see a sim?
Yeah.
Alright, this is definitely not a perfect spot, I tried to look for one that's decent. We've got. Low jack, I've been raising off eighteen, final table. We've got more short stacks, which like means heavier ICM for you. But we do have you with twenty two. And big blind behind you with more, so that's kind of the interesting spot, right? It's like you cover a low jack, big blind covers both of you. So that part, that part is reasonable. And then, yeah, against low jack, min raise, small blind, it does three bet, it also jams, nines are good enough to jam, tens are good enough to jam. Jacks are too good to jam.
So Faze put it in from low jack now?
Uh, alright, one more second. Um, and the sizing is small, I feel like. You kind of forgot here that like you don't need a lot of juice to get the job done in, in high ICM spots. Uh, maybe you think people don't. Like respect the sizing, you wanna go a little smaller or a little bigger, but you don't need to go.
Than that, I'm thirty five.
Eh, still.
Yeah, villain and the big line is thirty.
Yeah, we can, we can look, but it's, it's gonna be smaller than, than your sizing for sure. Okay, so if we three bet.
Because it's too few chips.
And yeah, when, when low jack back jams, we're still calling off.
Yeah, I would call up fourteen big lines with them, that's not the.
If big blind jams, jams, we're definitely still. Calling off. Uh, alright, I'll see if I can find a slightly better sim. Yeah, you had thirty, but I want, I need where you cover a low jack. But big blind covers you, that's kind of part of the problem, it's kind of a basic. Alright, this one's reasonable, I'll move it towards UTG one instead of low jack, and then you're twenty nine and then big blind's thirty seven, that's actually.
Let me covers the big one in the scenario, doesn't he?
No, af, that was after the chips got pulled. That's after you drank the pot.
I cover him, I do cover the big blind.
Uh, okay, so this spot, well, it's like, this one's weird too because. UTG one is starting off twenty five big blinds.
May, may, then, it's UTG that's opening.
Okay. Gonna be a pretty weird range. Now. Worth three betting. Yeah, I wish.
Make it five, make it five, let's just see this one, what, what this says. Make it five and then. The big blind all in thirty.
UTG folds. You're. Holding ten. Um, although it's, I think it's worth noting that in the ICM spot. You uh, you go really small to make it less painful and you have to fold it. You can save some chips, right?
Yeah.
As you're contemplating getting away from this hand.
Oh, ah, that, that's not really what I wanna do, but I mean, uh, farm forest. Oh, what do you guys do here?
It's optional. I don't hate it. On the button specifically, I like a lot better.
Oh my goodness, wanna play a big pot with this guy?
Not really. We're good here, no?
Yeah, I wanna keep it, wanna keep.
And you're lucky he didn't box you up on that river.
Hey, what do you guys say here? You know what happens when you lose a? A big bubble fee?
To the woodshed.
When you lose a big bubble fee, you're like, hmm.
Yeah, I mean, chippy B king seven's gonna be in there, but.
I walked away and we have pocket trees on the button again, this time we have a set. Okay.
What do you say about this one, Tim? Ah, you say? Oh?
Fold.
Ah, nah.
Fold every time. King nine, king nine suited.
So bucket three?
So is, is having a seven against MP good?
No. Yeah, it's, it's out of range, man.
Suited kings.
Out of range.
Is this not a good three bet? If I think this guy is opening too much.
Well, okay, now we're getting into, you know, different territory, but.
If, if you think he's opening too much, it's a good flat, you wanna three bet underneath what he is doing, right? Like, it's gonna wanna choose worse kings than this if he's wider.
I mean, okay, in um. I looked up a solve in a pretty similar spot and it is three betting, a sliver of king six suited, no king seven, no king eight, and then king nine and king ten are be pipping here. Uh, mixed up three bets and calls, so. No, only king six, and it's like twenty five percent of the time. So that's gonna change a little bit on stacked apps and. Positions, but.
And if he's wider, it's gonna pick the lower ones to three bet.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm not even using that king six suited, I'm just like doing king nine.
Oh, fish on the line.
So, pocket three, we see the flop, we bet one, he raised to four.
This dude, just betting one thing, can we just like pick some strategies that we can use across range? Can we just like, like say that we just like bet quarter pot when check two and, cuz this, this betting one thing, they're gonna figure it out, your opponents aren't stupid. Not all of your opponents are stupid, only some of them are.
Twenty two hundred and fifty six of them didn't figure this out.
But that's one.
No, the, why the clickback?
Well, 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 how am I gonna play first stack?
Dude, the sizing is so face up, but it's just like, but you don't. You just don't take this line with gloves. That's the thing, I just don't believe that the clickback size is balanced. If you're gonna have a size, no, if you're gonna have a size, it's gonna be like eleven or twelve, right? Like that's the size you would go to, something like, that sets you up for like a decent jam on, on turn.
Okay.
Cuz yeah, this sizing is just like really awkward, it sets you up for a hundred percent pot, you don't really wanna jam a hundred percent pot, right? Even if you're trying to fast play. Even with a set at this SPR, like you can just see a turn, bet it, and then bet river, like take it across three streets, you're not worried about it. You wanna like, you wanna three bet flop with like maybe like ace queen. You know, maybe a two pair, but set is just too strong at this SPR. You could check this one, let him see a river card, if, if he wants to make a straight, you'd love him to make it, if you want to make two pair.
You don't bet here.
No. I mean, if you're gonna hold one hand in reserve, if you're gonna slow play one combo, this is the one, right? Yeah? Yeah. But here again, like with this, this SPR is just so weird, like when you bet half pot and you're setting up a, a quarter pot river SPR. I just don't believe you have bluff, whereas like if you went like twenty percent pot on this turn, then I, you, you have room to like stab something and give up or stab something and follow through. I, I'd like just love to see these sizings, just like more geometric across all three streets.
Yeah. What do you guys do here?
Rebet sometimes, I think.
Hmm, don't, not, not here, right?
Why not?
I think king six and king seven is in there for like.
The, the offsuit stuff, your students.
Yeah, exactly, offsuit stuff, big blind versus button, this is too good.
I think off suits, yeah. Suited ones just call.
Yeah, yeah. You lose two big blinds per hundred, pre-betting, that's in my sim.
What about this one?
Hmm, okay.
Hold, 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 damn.
Yeah, th- there's a rejam stack behind you, like this is a fold because of that.
Bro, sure. Charts, just, just follow the charts.
It was spicy.
Where are your suited kings, your suited ace, this is a wheel king.
Suited king is like king eight.
At least you're covering everybody, that's good.
Yeah. So cut off with thirty and we have fifty.
He's gonna get lots of folds with like two big blinds under the gun.
Alright, this one's in the next low, this one's fifty percent raised, fifty percent fold in one semi I looked at, otherwise it's king four, king six.
There we go.
Nice one.
Alright, it's in there.
Yeah.
Although smaller, smaller, the sizings on this final table across the board have just been really big, and we can just hold them down some. Give us more room.
What about this one, call? Raise.
I wanna raise this a lot, right?
Yeah, there's a one big blind stack, I would make this four point five, four point eight a lot.
Yeah, I'm looking at a sim that has a three betting that's like seventy five percent of the time in a similar spot.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's indifferent, it can fold, it's, it's a shit hand.
Thirty's under immense ICM pressure.
And here, see bet or not?
Yeah, but you can go order, right, like final table.
One point eight.
Yeah, especially with this, like best, one of the best unpaired hands. I mean, if you wanna just like put him in the ICM ringer.
And check ten is a good one.
What do you wanna do with that jack ten, when the jack ten comes for you?
You don't really want the big blind coming in here. And you can still apply lots of pressure.
Okay, it's a call. I looked it up, it's a call.
Is, okay, cuz I don't.
I wanna, I wanna, I, I mean, I wanna get aggressive, but it's fine, we don't have to.
So.
Under a different arrangements, I looked up a different solvent, jamming fifty percent, so.
Okay, okay, so.
I don't want, you don't want a three bet though, you just wanna jam suited jacks, suited tens, if you're gonna.
This call, I'm running.
Yeah, in the PKO with the big line behind you, I think calling is more attractive, I kinda wanna raise a lot of my like mid flushes. Because, you know, you can get action from singles paid hands. That's, good aces. And he's just like not gonna do that much betting for us without better hands or big draws. That's the thing, yeah, we got a tiny bet in on flop, we get no bet in on turn.
Now what?
You have a value bet. Seventy.
I went with pot.
Might fund, he might start to find some folds of aces.
That's the thing.
What do you guys do here?
You, you guys are under a lot of ICM pressure from each other. You can put him to the test though, being in position is pretty nice, you could pop it. Queen seven is the hand that does this a lot, queen five, it's reasonable.
Does the bulk here?
And I don't know. It's a weird spot. I guess so. Kinda want big blind to come along, so.
What do you do here?
Rebet.
Yeah, I'm between. Calling being like not crazy and three betting being better.
I think you can call this, but it's a really good three bet.
That's the thing with the, with the. Small stack behind, like if you call, can you get him in there with, um, some like worse hands and dominated hands that you'll end up finding a bounty with.
I think it's a really good choice here, because when the other guy jams, it reopens the action for you, and so the guy in the middle has to be super worried about that.
Yeah, exactly.
It's pretty sweet to three bet to a size, so that when big blind goes all in, he doesn't reopen the action.
He had a five point five, I think he had like eleven or something.
You know, um, I'm looking at a similar sim and ace ten off can't find calls.
There's ace nine off in there as well.
Ace nine off is three betting.
Yeah, ace eight as well.
All the other offsuit aces are three betting, ace ten off is like the only offsuit hand that's calling. Uh, raising queen three, oh, here's a little, no, this is fine, this is good, I think it's more like queen deuce, but go for it.
That would.
How did you know?
Especially if he's not three betting.
Tim?
What's that?
How did you know I was gonna raise?
Uh, cuz you have it filtered to beep it.
And what, it's gonna show when I play the big line anyway?
Nah, if you, if you call, if you checked your option in the big blind, it wouldn't show.
It will.
No, cuz you didn't beep it.
Yes, it will.
You did not voluntarily put money into the pot.
It will show on my head anyway.
Okay, you have a different setting.
What do you say here?
Shitty spot.
It, it's not bad to keep this guy alive, if it's more pressure on the other guys, I.
It was a very big bounty, I got tempted.
I mean, I don't think that's crazy. I kind of agree with Peter though, like, like, next hand you're gonna be in small blind, you can pick up ace nine O and jam on him, that's very profitable, right?
We'll just pull here.
The hand after that, you're on button and he still has six big blinds and big blind has thirty big blinds, you can jam on both of them with tons of cards.
He has one last chip, like maybe we have to start thinking about just running it, but.
What about now? You don't, you still wanna run it, Pete?
No.
Nope.
Well. Well.
Did you left box this guy?
Show us how you do it.
Turn queen, nope.
I just didn't do it this time, you won. So I took immediate revenge.
Five O is pretty good, and this is spot. When you're on the button and like big blind is a medium stack at final tables, spot that's like really worth. Paying some attention to, cuz there are really weird jams there, that you can jam on someone with like a thirty big blind mid jam, inside stack.
Yeah, what do you do with this nice little ace nine here?
You might just rip it on.
On fire.
Timing. I like that.
Eight, okay, okay. Oh shit.
Doesn't matter. See that small?
And just win.
Easy game, nice one.
See, there's one. Do we just jam button there?
Why? You know, I wanna open ball, no?
Hmm, not really, you're kind of okay with just like taking it down without barriers.
I think sevens is good enough to call it twenty down here.
Four left.
No, I understand.
I lose them till first.
It'd be really close, but I think seven is in there. Probably jammed like fives.
Yeah, this guy lasted here, check, bet, I size out. Put me in.
What is this, king, king six suited?
Not his best play with the short guy here, but he had to do it, cuz he had two pair. Yeah.
Nice.
And then we just got heads up. Cuz uh, this guy got shorted. Cuz uh, this guy got shorted and busted. So that's the heads up part.
Two to one, nice.
The ten three off. Start with a little steel. Nine eight off. I'm like, Liam, okay, raise, uh. Let it go. Seven, four. Hit the seven. One bet call. Check. Now you pull a rise on the ace. I'm like, yeah. I don't think it's good to call here. I'll just fold. See that small call? Check. I size up cuz I have the diamond here. So here's basically the diamond. So it's a good board for me and I have a diamond, so I just barrel. He calls. What do you guys do here? He checks.
Lasted, I think, right? If you say you got the jacket diamonds.
Oh, we're definitely. This is like, this is the dream river card to bluff with, so.
Yeah, Fisa too, yeah.
So I went with the diamond, you know, cuz. Yeah, so I put him in. You know?
Beautiful.
And then he folds. Two, I make it six from the big line off suit ace, off suit kings. He rips, I'm like, ah, no. So here I bet small. He raises. What do you guys do?
Ooh, heads up, um. It's pretty draw heavy. You can click it.
I wanna raise more like one pair type hands, like great jacks. Yeah, we um, like, I know we say like draw heavy, but I think it's kind of like applying a um. Like a tighter range, kind of like framework to it, like both players just have like gobs of hands here, you know? We just have so much. Um, look at it, heads up solve.
Okay, I'm always clicking here, it's up.
I think so too, heads up, yeah.
Cuz he could have.
Maybe it's wrong, but.
Jack, king, jack, queen, jack, jack ten, a good jack that he's not willing to fold or a flip draw.
Nine, ten, six, sevens, nine, six.
So the first thing is, the the first sizing is not really a thing. This is a bet big board. Including with his hand. It it bets some like, it it bets some fifty, it bets some seventy-five, it bets some hundred.
Okay.
After you get raised, um. This hand is mixing. Um, it calls, it clicks. Okay, it's probably decent. Like if if opponents are gonna like barrel less with bluffs. Then it's probably reasonable. To just put more money in now. If like if they're announcing they have a hand they wanna go with, which could include like whatever, he's checking jack, jack five, eight five, like some hands that are pretty cooked. Then might be a good exploit to just raise more than the solver does.
Yeah, well, I wanted to raise. Uh, he stuffs. I call. He.
Just hold.
And.
Very nice.
That's how we ship. The Sunday special ten. Yeah.
That's what I wanna say about these like draw heavy boards that I've seen before on on strategies. Um, it can be pretty nice actually to take. To take the game to the turn and then give them a price that they can't call with. So like, you know, he already, he's gonna bet the turn and you just have an easy jam on like on anything remotely safe.
Yeah.
Whereas like he gets it in on the flop with like fifty percent, so it's a bit of a high variance way when like you figure that his range does have. Like I I called it before you flipped up the cards combo draw, right?
Alright, thanks a lot for watching, everybody. Thanks for sharing. Always a pleasure. And see you.